I'm calling to order the March 31st, 2025, meeting of the Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording? I would like to note that we do have a member participating remotely, so please allow me to confirm that all members anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, can you please respond in the affirmative? Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Corain?
Present.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Here.
Also, please note that each vote taken this evening will be conducted by a roll call vote. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now moving along to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I do not see anybody.
We do not have any public comment this evening. We have no community organizations, so we are moving along to 5A, a presentation by the Sewer Department.
Good evening. My name is Nick Schwartz, and I am the Sewer Superintendent and Assistant DPW Director, and hopefully I can get this working right. So I wanted to thank the Board for the opportunity tonight to speak with you about the Sewer Division of the Department of Public Works. So I started with the town in about 2021, and I don't know how much the Board has been kind of given information about the Sewer Division prior to my time here, but I know I haven't had a lot of opportunities to kind of speak with you about the division since then. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of go over the entire sewer system in general, give you sort of a sense of sort of how big our sewer system is, what it encompasses, and what we do day to day. I'm going to try to do it as quickly as I can because I want to be respectful of everybody's time, but I'll do my best on that. All right. So I'm going to break this presentation up into four general areas. So first, I'm going to go over sort of a system overview. So our sewer system is composed of 85 miles of gravity sewer. The pipes range in size from 8-inch to 30-inch in diameter. We have about 1,800 sewer gravity manholes, 12 wastewater pumping stations, and our sewer is, all of it, is sent to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility for treatment. We do not treat here in the town of Auburn. About 85% of the town is sewered, and you can sort of see from this map here where it's sewered, and maybe more importantly, where it's not. In general, the areas around West Street, Rochdale Street, Lester Street are not sewered, as well as around Eddie Pond and some other sort of pockets around town. In those areas, it's a little bit less densely populated, more rugged terrain, a little bit more difficult to install sewer infrastructure in those areas, a little bit more cost prohibitive, and there's not a big, you know, resident push to put sewer in those areas. All of the sewer system was built about the same time, in the 1970s, after the Clean Water Act passed, all generally done by the same engineer and same contractors, which is a nice benefit to the town because it was kind of thought out all at once, and it was designed pretty well. We have not run into major capacity issues, and it's held up pretty well. We currently have 5,744 residential connections and 516 commercial connections. So the pumping stations, like I mentioned, we have 12 town-owned sewer pumping stations. They range in size, and you can see them on the screen here about where they are, from 3,000 gallons per day to about 2 million gallons per day on average. We inspect these pump stations every day, including weekends, including holidays. We are here every day. It's a MasDEP requirement that we inspect most of these stations every day. We have specific tasks that are completed each day, weekly, monthly, general operation, maintenance, preventative maintenance type of things, to maintain the health of the pumps and our piping systems. So like I mentioned, over 95% of this system was built in the 1970s, including the pumping stations. Four of the smallest stations were completely replaced in 2017. Those were older pneumatic ejector style pumping stations that were replaced with more modern submersible style pumping stations, much more efficient, easier to maintain. The last of the smaller pneumatic ejector style stations was replaced last year in 2024. That was an ARPA-funded project over on Warren Road. The five largest pumping stations around town, those are generally the 1970s vintage stations. There's been some piping, pump replacements, some building maintenance roofs. But in general, those are original to when the system was built, so there's some needs there, specifically electrical needs and some other things. Our largest pumping station is the Pin Rock Pumping Station. That carries all of the town's flow to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility. Last year, we transported 756 million gallons of wastewater to the Upper Blackstone Facility, all via the Pin Rock Pump Station. We do have interconnection with the town of Oxford. Northern Oxford, portions of Northern Oxford, send all of their sewer flow to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility via our system. We do have an intermunicipal agreement with them to recoup costs for that. Last fiscal year, they transported 22.7 million gallons to Upper Blackstone through the town of Auburn, so about 3% of our flow last year. So that's kind of an overview of the system. Now I'm going to talk a little bit more about day-to-day operations. So we have four employees in the Sewer Division, four sewer mechanics, one of which is an operations foreman. We have one full-time sewer clerk, and we get support from other DPW clerical staff, one sewer superintendent, and a DPW director. Some of our major non-picked assets, we have a combination jet back truck. You can see a picture of that here. That was purchased about three years ago. We have a CCTV inspection crawler that was purchased about two years ago, two diesel bypass pumps, three pickup trucks, and an off-road gator. So some of the daily operations that we do, so our sewer operators, they generally operation-maintenance of the pump stations. They clean and inspect all of the sewer systems. They do manhole inspection and repair, maintenance of our off-road easements, emergency response. We have someone on call 24 hours a day. You can see in the little gif here, that's one of the sewer inspections that we did. That's off of Goddard Drive. That is a 24-inch sewer. It is not supposed to do that. So we just found that, and we are gonna figure out how to deal with it. What you see there is not only in a difficult spot off-road, it is under a river, so we're working on that. But just some of the things that we come up with. This is currently a problem, and we have found it before it became a catastrophe, and that's what we're doing. We're cleaning these sewers, we're inspecting them, so we can find issues before they become major problems. Our clerical staff, they do a lot. Some of the highlights, they respond to resident calls, complaints, questions. They handle all of the sewer billing, any procurement, purchasing, dealing with sewer connection permits, dealing with the contractors, real estate closings. Administratively, in addition to day-to-day operation and oversight of the staff in the Sewer Department, we're involved in the capital planning, construction project management for a lot of the capital projects, which we're going to talk about in a little bit, sewer system analysis and design, which goes into the capital projects a little bit, grant applications, trying to keep costs low to the sewer users. So with that, I'd like to segue into the financials of the Sewer Division. Dive into this manhole. So the Sewer Division is, it's an enterprise fund, so it's not funded by general tax levy. It's funded completely by our rates and the revenue that we generate. So our operating budget is $2.5 million last year. A capital improvement budget varies year to year, but typically $250,000 to $500,000 a year. That's not including some of the larger capital projects that we undergo. We have annual debt service right now, about $500,000 a year. Right now, we're servicing five different borrowings. One of them is set to expire, I believe, in next year, and then two more not until 2032. I expect to be taking on another borrowing authorization, hopefully this year or next, for some other projects that we'll talk about in a minute. Indirect costs, so because we're an enterprise account, we do reimburse the town for some of the overhead, so town management, accounting, employee benefits, things like that. They're all calculated, and we send back to the town about $350,000 a year to cover for those indirect overhead costs. For revenue, it's mostly user charges. We generated about $3 million in revenue last year from user charges, typically about $100,000 to $200,000 a year in sewer connection fees, other revenue about half a million dollars. It's mostly prior year's user charges. And we have maintained a retained earnings balance, so right now it's at about $900,000. I'd like to see it a little bit higher than that, but we're working to kind of balance that versus the capital needs of the system, some of the things we've been identifying lately. So the sewer rates, and maybe this will be a benefit for those watching at home, but it's something we get questioned on a lot. How is my sewer bill calculated? So the rates are based off of annual water use. Every gallon of water you use is assumed to go back into the sewer system. Now, residents have the option to meter non-sewer water. For example, if you're watering your lawn, you can put a meter on your outdoor water use, and you can get that deducted from your sewer bill. But sewer bills are calculated on an annual basis, so they're billed in arrears, so all of your sewer use for the prior year is billed in the following year. So the bill's coming out this coming October would be your sewer use through the end of June. The bill is calculated for the full year, but it's split into two equal halves. The first installment, the first half is sent out in early October. The second half is sent out in early March. The way the billing is structured is there's a cutoff at 5,000 cubic feet. If you use 5,000 cubic feet of water or less, you are charged a flat rate, which currently is $206 for the year. If you use more than 5,000 cubic feet, then you are charged variable rate for any water that's used over that threshold at $10.94 per 100 cubic feet. That's the current rate. You can see here kind of how the rates have risen over time. So why do they rise? So the major impacts to our rates, the biggest impact is really the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Assessment. So we don't treat wastewater in town. We send it to Upper Blackstone, and they charge us for that. That's 63% of our entire operating, $2.5 million operating budget, so that's about $1.6 million. That goes up 5% in a year, then we now have an $80,000 budget shortfall that we have to make up for. So that assessment going up is really our primary driver for the rates, but also planned capital projects. The sewer system was all, it was built mostly in the 70s, like I mentioned earlier, and it's been a good ride, but it's going to start catching up with us. So we're engaging in some tasks right now to kind of get ahead of the sort of infrastructure needs that we see over the next few decades, and I'll talk about that in a minute also. So the Sewer Division is overseen by a Board of Sewer Commissioners. They're responsible for setting the sewer rates, as well as reviewing and approving sewer bill abatements. Some of their duties were shifted to town management during the reorganization in 2012, but these are their major tasks, along with providing kind of general oversight and technical advisement on capital projects and planning. They are all residents of the town of Auburn. They are appointed by the town manager on three-year terms, and the Board meets about once every month or two, depending on the time of year. During billing season, we'll meet more often to handle abatements. Other times, we might meet slightly less frequently, but it's always posted on the Board's webpage, on the town's webpage. Board membership is what's shown on the screen here. So lastly, I'd like to talk about some of the sewer projects. It's one of my favorite area, and I am going to do my best to go through these quickly. But I'm going to talk about some recent projects we've worked on, some of the ongoing projects we're working on, and some of the projects that I see coming up in the near future. As far as recent projects, so the Pin Rock Pump Station, that's our large pump station. We built a redundant force main, 20-inch ducted line force main that goes from the pump station to the Upper Blackstone Treatment Facility. If that force main were to have ruptured, we would have had no way to bypass that station. It's too much flow, and the station is too restricted, so we built a secondary force main alongside the original force main. That was a $1.7 million project that was generated, completed at the beginning of last year. The Warren Road Pump Station Replacement Project I mentioned was a million-dollar ARPA-funded project that was completed last year, the replacement of our last pneumatic ejector style station. It was also included, the slip lining of the force main. The SCADA system upgrade, so the SCADA system is basically the brains of the pump station. It controls the pumps, and it also sends data back to our computer system so that we can see how the pump stations are operating in real time. We can see data, and we can kind of analyze trends, so we can identify issues before they become major issues, and we can also see things like energy use and things like that, and trend things over time. It's been excellent since we've upgraded that system, which was last year, to a new cellular, 4G cellular system. VFD upgrades is a project that we've just completed, and without getting too much into the weeds on the technical side of that, the VFDs are variable frequency drives. It's basically what starts and stops our pumps. They were motor starters, which turn a pump on and off like a light switch, and now you're able to kind of set the speed of the pumps, and it also allows us basically to operate them at a more energy-efficient sort of setting. And that project was funded 90% by a MasDEP energy grid. That was for eight pumps at our second and third largest pump station. So some current ongoing projects, these three projects are currently in design. The Goddard Drive Sewer Lining Project is as a highest priority recommendation from our Sewer System Evaluation Study that was conducted two years ago. That is an off-road sewer, 24-inch concrete sewer, and it's got a lot of inflow infiltration, a lot of structural issues. That was that video that I showed you earlier. So that's estimated to be about $1.6 million construction. Sword Street Force Main Lining Project, also in design, that's a mile-long, 16-inch ducted line force main, our highest head, so highest pressure pump station. It has a history of breaks, and the rehabilitation of that line is suspected to be about $5.1 million. Both of these projects were submitted to the State Revolving Fund for their SRF program. They did not make the cut, so we have gone back to the drawing board a little bit to see how we can chunk these projects up into more manageable bites and get them done in a way that's not a major impact to our sewer repairs. The 2025 Sewer Rehabilitation Project, that's about a dozen or so different, smaller recommendations from our Sewer System Evaluation Study that was done, some spot repairs, sewer lining projects. We're hoping to bid that out this May and complete that work this fall, so we're wrapping up design on that. Some anticipated future projects, so the Asset Management Plan, I'm not going to go too much into this because it's on another agenda item tonight, but that was submitted to SRF and was approved for grant funding. Essentially, we're looking at our entire system, and we're trying to come up with a long-term capital plan for every asset in our system, so that we can get a better handle on, okay, what's going to be the needs over the next few decades. SSE S year two, so that stands for Sewer System Evaluation Study. MasDEP requires sewer utilities to regularly inspect and maintain their sewer system. So in year one, we inspected 10% of our sewer system. A lot of the projects that we've done recently were based off the recommendations of that inspection. This year, we're hoping to engage in the year two of those inspections, but this time we're looking to do a lot of work in-house, and we believe we can save the town quite a bit of money by doing that. We've gathered some assets together that allow us to do that, some extra training for the staff, so I'm very optimistic about that. The Pin Rock Pump Station, there's some improvements that need to be done to that station. We've been trying to get the generator replaced for a few years now with this FEMA grant. I believe we're about to get that awarded, and we also have some odor control system upgrades that need to be done, that are in the works. Upland Street has a sewer that needs to be rehabilitated, an 18-inch gravity concrete sewer. That was identified in our last Sewer System Evaluation Study as a high priority need. Expected to cost $1.1 million. It's on the back burner now because we can only do so many of these projects at once. So that's the overview of the Sewer Department. It's really a very high-level kind of introduction. I could go on a lot more about some of the things we do, but I hope this has at least given the Board and anybody else who's watching a little bit of sense of what our sewer system is, what it's made of, and what we do each day, but I'm happy to, you know, take any questions, or anybody can reach out to me at any time and talk sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do Board members have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. A lot of great information that I greatly appreciate. I just have a couple of questions based off the presentation and some things that were coming to mind. Given the age, I think you said 1970s after the Clean Water Act, so this is unlikely, but do we have any combined stormwater and sewer lines, or is it all 100% sewer?
That's a great question. I actually meant to mention that, but no. We don't have any combined sewer stormwater, and so far, based off the inspections we've done, we haven't even found any that have been accidentally tied together. So we're lucky that we don't have anything like that.
I'm going to go here, and people are probably going to be like, oh, no. The third rail, 40B, projects or large other projects. Do we have any current capacity concerns or issues that you see down the line as we start seeing these large multifamily developments come online?
No, not really, but it's a bit of a tricky question because we also don't have a hydraulic model of our system. So it's something that I've been talking to a couple different consultants about lately, and it is something that I intend to look into over the next year or so. The way I wanted to phase this is I'm going to go through this Asset Management Plan sort of phase here, and then depending on how that shakes out, I may either wrap it into or subsequently do a hydraulic model because it's a question that comes up a lot, you know, what can our system, what is our capacity? And I can look at a pipe that's downstream of development and say, oh, there's plenty of capacity in that pipe, but then what about five miles on the other side of town? What about that pipe? You know, it's hard to identify which specific sticks of pipe are the capacity restrictions. I have gone through that level of analysis, and for the last few developments that have gone in, I've traced the entire flow of their sewer from their development to our Pin Rock Pump Station, and I looked at, okay, what's the flattest pipe in this section? What's the flattest pipe in this section? What's the capacity of that pipe, and how does it compare to what this development is putting in? In some cases, we have them do flow monitoring to see what the current flow is going through those pipes, to see what the capacity is. Now, that doesn't necessarily give us great information on wet weather capacity because it's sort of an instantaneous view of it, although it's usually, I'll have them do it for a month, but at least it's a starting point. So that is something that I'm looking at getting a better handle of. You know, it's a long way to answer your question, but the shorter answer is there are not currently any capacity constraints that we're aware of.
Thank you, and I appreciate the long-winded answer as well. Similarly, you know, given that a certain portion of Oxford is tied into our system, and Oxford is also going through a record amount of growth as well, both commercial and residential, and forgive me, I wasn't on the Board when the agreement was brought before the Board and approved, but are there requirements or triggers in that agreement on maximum flow per day or maximum flow per year that they're allowed to bring through our system?
Yes, there are. So they have two different constraints. One is through our intermunicipal agreement. They're allowed a maximum of, I believe it's 100,000 gallons per day, and that can't exceed that more than, I believe it's two or three days in a row. They have rarely ever hit that number. I think I've seen them hit that number once. They also have an inter-basin transfer requirement with MasDEP that they can't transfer a certain amount of water, which is lower than our threshold. I believe it's 80,000 gallons per day, so that's it's a separate, more stringent restriction, but it is outside the intermunicipal group. So yes, we do have those caps. For what it's worth, I believe the current agreement, and I'll have to double-check this, I believe it expires at the beginning of next year, so we'll be engaging with talks with them this year about renewing that agreement and making any modifications that we think are necessary.
I know that our Planning Board and our Zoning Board rely on your office and peer review for a lot of the developments that come through. Is Oxford zoning or planning boards reaching LTU when projects are targeted in the area that would come through our sewer for your input and professional advice?
That hasn't really come up, so I don't know if they would if they had a large development that impacted our sewer, or maybe they have had those developments and they have not reached out. I guess I'm not sure. We're kind of hinging on, you know, you have a maximum flow per day that you have to stick to, so if they are within that limit, it's sort of, you know, our hands would be kind of tied a little bit. So there hasn't been a lot of that communication.
Okay, so I guess I would just note to the administration, if we can put a sort of a note that when we renegotiate our intermunicipal agreement, that that becomes a requirement that they consult with our Sewer Division when projects are going to impact our sewer system. The other question I have is, in terms of, if somebody wanted to get one of the meters for their outdoor watering, how would they go about doing that?
So they purchase it on their own, typically reach out to a plumber. The plumber will install that. We don't sell meters, and we don't have specific specifications on meters. I'd like to change that in the future, but we don't currently. We just require that they be done by a licensed plumber. They'd be inspected by the plumbing inspector, and they have a form they need to fill out with our office so that we can document that. We ask that they read in cubic feet, but other than that, it's up to the homeowner to handle that.
Two more, sorry. Based on the sewer rates, are there any similar programs like the tax write-off for seniors or benefits, a sewer rate reduction for seniors, a low income, or other residents?
We offer 20% discount for seniors, and anybody that qualifies for a discount on their real estate taxes qualify for a discount on their sewer bill, so we honor anything that they get through the town.
Great, thank you. Last question, you mentioned the Sewer System Evaluation Study. Is that available online? If somebody like me wants to geek out and go read it?
Is the document available online?
Yeah.
It's not.
It's something we can put online?
I could.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I see a lot of proactive nature of what you guys are doing and trying to get ahead of it. See a lot of grant funding for projects, so that's always appreciated. I know a lot of this is funded, or it's funded by the rate payer, so it's not for the whole town, but your work is definitely important for the town. My question, again, you have 900,000, right, 900,000 in retained earnings, and you weren't super comfortable with that. What number makes it more comfortable as a manager for that, or is there a percentage that you'd like to see it equate to?
Yeah, it's something that, you know, I've liked to get a better handle on myself. I know the magic number that we've thrown around with the Board of Sewer Commissioners is a million dollars. It'd be great to have a million dollars in that account. I think that I'd like to see it even more than that, but over the past couple of years, we've been trying to get a handle on some capital projects that have been needed, so it's been a bit of a balancing act on that. We have made attempts to, it's difficult to model the rates each year because the only information we have is last year's water use. So I can model and say, if I raise the rates by this much, we'll generate $100,000 in revenue, but I have no idea how much water people are going to use next year. I only know what they used last year. So for example, we raised the rates last year with the hopes of generating $100,000 in additional revenue. We generated about $20,000 to $30,000 in additional revenue, so that's money in our retained earnings that we don't now have. So it's something that we're looking at, how to get better at modeling, but yeah, I guess to answer your question, there's not a specific number in mind, but I think $1 to $1.5 million, or even $2 million, would make me very comfortable. I mean, it really, it's a matter of being able to respond to a major sewer catastrophe, and there is money in that retained earnings to handle most of the issues that we would have, for example, a major force main break. And I think the most costly part of our system would be the Pin Rock force main that could rupture, and we've kind of mitigated that by doing that redundant force main project. So I think we have enough money in our retained earnings to handle most catastrophes. It's just a matter of, you know, if there's any kind of cascading failures, it's hard to predict.
And the fees that go to the Blackstone Treatment Facility, do they change often? And the fees that go to the Blackstone Treatment Facility, do they change often? Are they, again, tiered by like how much flow we have? Is it 500, you know?
Yeah, it's increased every year. And it's basically, it's partitioned out to the different member communities of Upper Blackstone Facility based off the percentage of flow that they send to that facility. So basically, they'll look at the last three years of flow that we've sent to Upper Blackstone. They will set an average, they will adjust our rate, and then they'll adjust it also based off of any of their increasing costs.
So again, you're paying for the water usage and then the sewer is calculated. So I don't know if it helps you with the sewer or the meters going off, but it certainly reduces the amount of flow we have. Is there like a threshold where if the community got below something, the rates would drop or their volume would be discounted?
You're saying our flow to Upper Blackstone, if it were to go down?
Correct. So for residents, like, hey, if we start conserving more water, this is great. It also helps our flow and we can like...
You could definitely make the argument that our assessment would be more favorable if our, if the percentage of our flow to that treatment facility was lower. So yes, reducing water use would have a beneficial impact on rates. You know, I would be hesitant to say it, rates will go down, but you know, I think it would definitely help.
If I may, through the town, I know we've talked about other ways to mitigate water usage and rain gardens and other things that residents can do to help reduce their water consumption, especially in time of drought. I don't know if that, again, is something we can educate people on, get that out there and potentially, again, impact the community positively. So thank you. Appreciate the work.
And just, you know, to kind of draft on that a little bit more, one of the major things that contributes to our flow to the treatment plant is inflow and infiltration. So whenever it rains, groundwater getting into our pipes, that's flow that is metered and sent to the treatment facility for treatment that is just added cost. So a lot of the projects that I talked about tonight have a main goal of reducing the sewer defects, reducing inflow and infiltration. So I think that, you know, spending the money on these capital projects does have that added benefit as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be moving along to 5B. It is a presentation from Michael Marino, our IT Director.
Hello, I'm Mike Marino, the IT Director. I have a presentation for you tonight. I'll try to make it quick. So my department, the IT Department, involves myself, the IT Director, and John Horniac, who is the Assistant IT Director. He is also the AV Specialist and the Social Media Specialist. This is a map of the influence of the IT Department. We touch every building in the town. We all, we have a connection for one reason or another, depending on the location. A lot of it is our network, some of it is phone systems. We have connection back to the school as well for some networking. We're in every building in the town, basically. Even the PAPA Center, we have connection up there. So responsibilities, so day-to-day maintenance and support. We have 190 computers that we currently support as well as the software that's installed on them. We do network share permissions, granting people access to shared folders and such. We have 193 desk phones, 36 cell phones, 48 iPads, all of those that we're responsible for. Printers, copiers, plotters, all together, we have 77 of those. We do social media postings, we do website postings, and we do user and email accounts. We also do a lot of networking, which involves the fiber network between the buildings, wireless networks. We have firewalls and switches that need maintenance and updating, security updates and policies for our firewalls. We do server management. We have 33 servers currently. Those consist of accounting, financial servers, files, network shares, monitoring and reporting, print management, update management, virtualization in the phone system, recovery. We have email archive that's required by the state to archive all emails for a certain amount of time. We do server and file backups in case of catastrophe or in case somebody deletes a file on one of the network shares, we're able to bring those back. We do social media archives. Again, that's required by the state as well, similar to email. Threat prevention. We do a cyber awareness training that's funded by the state. It's a grant that the state does that we apply for, and we've been doing it, this is our sixth year. It sends out training modules to everybody, and they go through that and learn about phishing schemes, all sorts of different USB schemes, you know, all sorts of different things to look out for as far as threats with not just email, but computers, allowing people access into the buildings, things like that. It's a really, it's a really good training, and I'm happy to have been doing it for six years now. Endpoint protection, that's antivirus, ransomware protection, things like that. The firewall policies, we maintain those to allow access, to disallow access. Spam and phishing filtering. So I took a snapshot of last month. We had over 53,000 emails, and about 44,500 were delivered, and about 8,500 were blocked for various reasons, whether it be a spam or virus or things like that. So that gives you an idea of the flow of emails that come through month to month. Some miscellaneous things, we do emergency management, we work with the police and the fire departments. We're currently doing a fiber project with the radio networks. We do inventory tracking, we do mobile device management, that's for the tablets, the iPads, things. We do, we help with public records. We research new technologies and threats, SaaS supporting, which is software as a service, which is a big trend nowadays. So we do the permitting program, the new one that we set up. We have a new recreation program that we set up, all those cloud-based services and security cameras as well. So these are some projects that we have ongoing. We have a switch replacement. Each building has at least one switch that connects the network together. The former switchers were in place for about 15 years when the fiber network was first created. Because there's newer technology, we're able to get new switches to utilize that to give us greater bandwidth between the buildings. There used to be a one to two gigabyte connection, and now they're all at a 10 gigabyte connection. And that project is 99% complete. We have one building left to do, that's Gleason, and we're waiting for the location where the switch is going to be completed before we can replace it, but the switch is ready to go as soon as the location is, and that'll complete that project. Windows upgrade. We're upgrading all of our computers to the newest version of Windows. There's a deadline for, of October 2025, and right now, we're about 75% complete. We started doing that February, I believe, I started the major push and just slowly rolling it out to the different buildings over and over, just so we get to a higher percentage. And then we have a few months left over to get any stragglers out of the way. So by October, we'll be fully upgraded. Virtualization upgrade, right now, we're testing virtualization options. The current provider that we use was purchased by a different company, and the prices are going up, and they keep making changes, so we're not happy about that. So we want to reduce costs, so we're looking into alternatives for that. And some other projects, we have a golf course phone system upgrade, so that's going to start the end of this week, beginning of next week, replacing the existing phones with a brand-new system there. Folcaster, which is a replacement for the software that ACTV uses for the meetings. This is a project that John Horniac's been working on. He's got the hardware completed, and he's working on the software emulation. That's about 70% completed, and he estimates this will be about 8,000 savings over the existing Tricasters that we use. He's also working on improving meeting recordings and streaming. They recently purchased an Owl Cam to test at the library meetings, and based off of the initial meeting that they went with, they've had good responses for that, so they're looking at possibly utilizing that elsewhere as well. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. A lot of great information. I just have a couple of questions. I know it varies by municipality, but do we lease our computers or do we purchase them outright?
We purchase them outright.
Have we looked at leasing as a possibility just to get a more regular turnover and more technology upgrade that comes with that regular turnover?
We haven't looked at leasing options, but that's something we can look at. We currently have a five-year plan for turnover, so the computers get refreshed every five years, and I split that up into three years. So year one, a third will get replaced, year two, a third, year three, a third, and then we'll do laptops and then servers. So that's my replacement schedule every five years, but we can certainly look into leasing options.
Thank you. Speaking of laptops, if COVID has taught us one thing, is that, you know, having the ability to work from anywhere or to be mobile, even if you're doing a building renovation, to have your staff be able to move some of the location while that's being done. Are we predominantly desktop-based or are we moving towards laptops only or?
We're predominantly desktop-based here. Most of the users here, the people that work here are at desks or, you know, physical locations here. There's not a lot of outside work. We do have laptops for certain departments or certain individuals that do need access to that, or like the fire department has a bunch of iPads, the inspections have a bunch of iPads, so their work can be done remotely in the field.
Great, thank you. The last thing, do you guys manage the website?
Yes and no. Each department is responsible for their own updates. We do help departments update. Some departments have a person that does it themselves, some don't, and they go through us to update it, but it's the responsibility of each department to do their own.
In terms of the overall website construction, I know that the version that we're running of that company is pretty dated in terms of the capabilities now. Have we looked at upgrading to newer versions that are from that company that present just a more friendlier look and user-friendly basis and sort of provide a lot more of on-demand user services?
We do have a refresh available to us, so we can go through and basically update the look and feel of the website. But in order to do that, we need more input because currently, it's not something that I can do myself. I can't say what's better for everybody to have a new website, you know what I mean? So we did reach out, I believe it was last year, and we got a few responses, but most of them weren't related to that, and we were able to make some changes based on those responses, but we really need more input as to what people are looking for so we can make those changes.
So I guess this is going to be another thing to the administration.
If I can, through the chair, I realized that last week myself, and we are developing a concerted effort to get social media blasts out there with links to respond to anyone who uses our website, who has any recommended changes. So you might have already started to see them, but they'll be continuing so that we can start getting responses from our residents.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Yep. So you talk about a lot of projects in here. I just want to ask, do you have a call volume or a lot of reactive work that's going on? Does something goes down, it takes you away from the other things? Like, I know the fire chief will tell you his call volume, but do you have a call volume or call log that you, is it increasing, decreasing?
It varies. It really isn't a set amount. Every day's different. Some days can be quiet, and, you know, we can work on projects without getting interrupted. Some days, it's just constant phone calls, constant emails. It really, really depends. Right now, there's a good balance. John's able to handle most of the calls while I'm able to do work on some of the projects, and then we can trade off where my projects are slowing down. Like the switch project is pretty much done, so I don't need to focus on that. I can take up some of the slack if there is some that are from John, and he can work on some of those projects as well. So there's a good trade-off between the two of us.
So do you track the volume of those calls?
We do. We do have a ticketing system, and we maintain that. People are able to email, and it automatically generates a ticket. Sometimes if they don't, if they call us or that, we'll add a ticket to the system manually.
And from those tickets, do you tend to see a trend, and that's what creates the projects? Or how are projects defined and what do you do with them?
The projects are, it depends. Sorry. Like the switch project, that's unrelated to the calls, that's more of a technology issue. We knew that we had aging technology, we wanted to upgrade those. Things like the Owl Cam project that John's working on, that was because of tickets, because of feedback from certain departments about meetings. So he was able to work with them to get this system in place that can help automate some of the meetings. So it really depends on the project itself.
I appreciate that, and I like the tracking, and, you know, year over year, it would be nice to understand, and I know you were one-man show for a long time, so there's definitely a need, but understanding what that need is and does it grow exponentially with everything is something I'd like to understand going forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, we're on number 6A. It's the DPW Sewer Grant.
Hello again. So this is for a grant through the State Revolving Fund for an asset management plan. It's something I touched on a little bit in my presentation, but essentially, what we'd like to do, as I've been here about three years now, you know, I noticed that as we go into the rate-setting season each year, and I go over the board, the Sewer Commissioners, okay, what do we need for next year? And we kind of look at, okay, next year, the year after that, what are the projects? But we're not really looking any further down the road. And what I'm worried about is coming up upon a cliff that we now have to climb, and it could have a major impact on ratepayers. So I'm seeing a lot of projects on the horizon that we got to figure out how to fund, and what I'd like to do is sort of engage with a consulting engineer to inventory all of our assets, all of our sewer pipes, pump stations, equipment, everything. Come up with a criticality risk analysis for everything and kind of get a better long-term asset management plan for the entire sewer system. This would include improving our GIS systems and also a rate modeling component to assess, is our rate structure the most equitable way to do it? And, you know, what should our rates look like over time? So this project, it's estimated to be a $250,000 effort. The State Revolving Fund does a 60% grant, but that includes in-kind service calculations to reach that $250,000. So we have estimated, I believe it was about $40,000 in in-kind services. So with a $150,000 grant from the State Revolving Fund, it would be about $60,000 cost to the Sewer Division for that project. That was approved on the draft IUP from SRF, so we know that it's a go, but we'll need the board approval, and then we need to allocate the money at annual town meeting for the project because it's a reimbursement grant. So that's what we're looking to do.
Do board members have any questions?
I do. So I know you've mentioned a couple of times in-house work, and there's four members, including yourself, for the, like, is the workload going to be at one point overwhelming to do in-kind and all the other project work that you're planning? And like, how are we going to maintain it? I just, I don't want them all focused on projects where we can't utilize services where they were planned to be originally.
Yeah, absolutely. It's something that I've looked at. So there's definitely something to be said for doing work in-house as a cost savings, but as you said, we also have a limited amount of resources. You know, one of the things we've looked at is, for example, that sewer system evaluation, doing some of that work in-house, we can have a significant cost savings. So that's something I'm looking to do. We have another project where we're looking to maybe do some easement access work that might be a significant, significant labor drain, and while it would be cost, it would be beneficial to do it in-house, I don't know if I can allocate that many resources to that project. I think we'll probably bid that one out. For this project, it would be over the course of the next two years, and based off of the... For this project, it would be over the course of the next two years and based off of the hours that we've allocated, I do not believe that it's going to take up an inordinate amount of our time.
Other than questions?
Yeah. So I just want to agree with Mr. Chambers and that's a concern of mine as well, is when we start talking about doing in-house, a lot of projects in-house that, you know, there's sort of the opportunity cost. What are we not getting done in order to do these projects? So I'm grateful that you've thought through this and you've analyzed it and, and are drawing those lines in the sand with respect to what projects make sense and which don't make sense and, and, you know, willing to go out to bid for those that don't.
Yeah, absolutely. And the way I plan on structuring this project or the agreement with the engineer is sort of a not-to-exceed-time-of-materials agreement, you know, and if I, if I decide at some point, okay, this is, this is becoming too much for us, we can revisit that with an amendment. We'll, we'll have the money available to, to shift that a little bit. But being optimistic right now.
No, that sounds good. I probably should have asked this during the last one, so I'm going to take my second bite at the apple and do this. Are, are we coordinating, given that this is assets management, when DPW is repaving roadways, are we coordinating with them ahead of time where they're identifying the roadways and we're going in and you're doing assessment of those sewers, making any modifications or repairs that need to be made before we repave a roadway?
Yes, absolutely. We, we do, we take a look at all the manholes and we, and we, you know, if we have to do any sort of manhole work, we try to do that ahead of time. And, you know, now that we have the capability of doing sewer inspections on the pipes with our CCTV crawler, you know, that's something that we've talked about doing more. To make sure, hey, you know, we got to dig and replace the spotless, do it real quick before we, we pave the road. But it is something that we do coordinate prior to paving roads.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the request for the grant as outlined in the letter of March 27th from Mr. Schwartz.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Corrine?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We have no communications items. We're on the select for general items. There's a request for a proclamation honoring moderator Charlie Baker for his many years of service. Do board members have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I may. So I had asked to, to put this on the agenda. I learned last week that Charlie is not going to run for reelection as, as town moderator. He has served in, as town moderator during two, two stints. He was also a long-term, longtime, you know, board selectman member as well as a longtime town meeting member. He has dedicated numerous amounts of hours and years of his life to this town. And last year we started the tradition during the volunteer recognition night to honor those volunteers who were, who were stepping back from their volunteer services. And when we had set up the volunteer recognition night for April 7th, 2025, we had said that if the opportunity came to, to name someone or to recognize them that night, that we should bring it before the board in advance of that meeting. So I'd like us to, to, to create a proclamation for our signature to recognize Charlie at that volunteer dinner.
Board members have any questions?
One question I have, have we reached out to Mr. Baker to make sure he's available on the 7th?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry. I believe that Caitlin was reaching out to him.
Through the chair. We're working on that now.
So this is a vote. Is there a motion?
Motion that we issue a proclamation to, for Charles Baker relative to his many years of service to the town of Auburn to be presented subject to his availability at the volunteer recognition night on April the 7th.
This is a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Corrine?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We have a gift acceptance in our package.
Motion that we accept with gratitude and let a letter be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second.
That's through a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Corrine?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We do have, I added this board vote on a potential April 3rd meeting. At 6:30 PM, we are running into a time crunch. We, the town attorney wasn't able to be at this meeting to discuss the moratorium, but he is available on the 3rd. And we have to have the books printed for town meeting members by the 14th and we still have to have town attorney review the rest of the warrant. So are board members available? April 3rd at 6:30 for a meeting?
So.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's my birthday, but I'd be more than happy to spend it with you.
I will bring you like cupcakes.
I can be available.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, are you available?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. So we do need a motion. It is a vote.
Make a motion that we schedule a meeting. Are we doing one agenda item or how many agenda items are we putting?
Hopefully it is one agenda item.
And this is to go over the warrant or is this also related to the moratorium?
Discuss the moratorium, which has a placeholder in the warrant, I believe, correct? We can review all of the warrant articles for recommendation tonight. Or if you prefer to do that on the 3rd, at the pleasure of the board.
I think we need time to review and for the warrant to be finalized anyways. I'm not really prepared to do that. So I would make a motion that we schedule a meeting on April 3rd at 6:30 with one agenda item, which is to discuss with town council, the moratorium article.
Can I just ask that it be two agenda items that we do allow public comment?
Sure.
I'll second it based on that.
A roll call vote. Sorry.
No, I just, I know we have one agenda item. Is there a reason we would just limit it in case something else comes up?
It's a special meeting. I would just prefer that we stay on task. We've got counsel here. We want to make sure that we're utilizing his time and our time. I mean, we're cheap, but he isn't. So we want to make sure that we're squeezing him like a lemon on this item and not having distractions on other items.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Corrine?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We are now on 8D, the annual town meeting warrant article discussion. How does the board want to take these?
I would like to recommend that we take the citizens' petitions first so we can ask any questions and then if need be, we go back to.
I, I thought the purpose of this was the citizens' petition since we had already gone through the staff and the board-based ones at our last meeting.
Sure. However, the board would like.
But I, I agree with Mr. Chambers that we should be doing the citizen petitions ones first.
All right. I believe the first citizen petition is Article 34. Am I, if I missed one?
33.
33. Thank you.
I'm sorry. You're right. It is 34. I misread.
Okay, sorry. Is Mr. Baracus here? If I said your name wrong, I'm so sorry.
So I believe he was and then left during the other segments of the meeting.
I am sorry to hear that. Do board members have any questions on this petition that perhaps we could get to him to get answers on?
I do. And it's probably more for staff than it is for Mr. Baracus. There is a part of MGL that addresses property deferments starting at the age of 65, which I understand has a interest of 8% associated with it. What Mr. Baracus is proposing does not seem to have any sort of detail in it that would lead me to believe this isn't something that we would need to seek legislative approval. But that's, I guess, my biggest question. Is this something the town meeting can vote? My reading of the law is we can increase the, I believe it's the asset amount up to a certain amount, but I don't think that we have as a community, the authority to create our own separate kind of deferral process without legislative approval or a home rule petition. So I guess that's my general question.
If I may respond to that, the board tonight will vote to approve that I send this to town council. And I'll ask then about that issue, if it needs to go, if it needs to be some sort of legislative action associated with that.
My second question also is, did Mr. Baracus at any time reach out to town staff and discuss this article with them?
I can't speak as far as what they did discuss with them, but I do know that when he came to our office and asked about the current, I'm trying to think. The way it is currently for the, for the senior citizens as far as what they get for a write-off, we did let them know that that's all done through the assessor's office. And I know he did go down and speak with them, but he still pulled this petition. Like I said, I don't know exactly what the wording is, but I do know that he did go and speak with them.
The assessor not here?
No, he is.
He is.
Yep, he is.
So I was not in the office when he came to the office, but I believe our staff, Lisa and Carla, informed him of possible exemptions that may exist. Age requirements, income, assets. And the deferral is, it exists, but it hasn't been used in the town in several years. And I think there was only one or two cases from the previous assessor. So it's kind of a, something that's been vaguely talked about with accounting, the town management and the collector's office, but I don't think there's a policy per se that's in place or kind of a working guideline at this moment.
Since you're up here, I do have a question for you. Is there a, should this go through, is there a certain amount that the town? Would we be able to recap, recapture any of the deferred taxes or would there be a, a limit on how much we could recapture from an estate?
So I believe the deferment does accrue like an 8% annual interest rate. And it's my understanding, without going into full depth and researching it, but they can go up to like 50% of loan to value. But if there are lien holders such as mortgagees on the property, the, the mortgagie has to agree to subordinate their lien. And then they also have to fill out a pretty extensive application every year. You know, tax returns, all, all income, all assets, things like that, but.
If, if I can ask, not necessarily tonight, but for town meeting, certainly I think would be helpful because on the face of this, this looks like something that we'd want to do to help our seniors stay, stay in their homes. But I do know of other municipalities that have implemented something similar to this. And I believe I talked to yourself and your staff about this informally when we were discussing other warrant articles. But I know those municipalities have associated costs to running those programs. So there are legal fees, there are legal reviews. You have to attach deed restrictions or, or put liens against their deeds or in their property.
Liens, correct.
Annually. You also have to calculate the interest. You have to work with the, the mortgagees. So it'd be good for town meetings' information to, for them to have an understanding of what it would mean for the municipality to implement something like this, all the, all the requirements that, that the assessing office would have to do in order to implement it. Additionally, it'd be good to getting understanding from our CFO is that if we are deferring all this property tax, to understand what that does for the town's cash flow. Because obviously we're not collecting that tax. We're not that year. It's not going into our operating budget. It's, it can't be utilized at that time for expenses. So it'd be good to understand the implications on the various levels for the town, should town meeting pursue this type of program.
Again, I'm not sure on the intent, but it says property tax increases. So that means they'd still pay a current or some property tax. It just wouldn't be the increases? Is that what, how you would read that or understand it?
No, I think that they would defer it.
The difference.
It's, it, the way it reads is the difference. So it doesn't, so when they turn 68, it no longer increases, but they'd still be responsible for paying that current. So they just would defer any increases and hopefully we're not increasing too much. So it's a, not the whole dollar amount of the property tax that would be deferred, or at least that's how I read it.
Through the chair, that's how we read it as well.
Do board members have additional questions or comments for the town?
Other than, you know, once we get notification from council, I'm very concerned with how it's worded. I, I think that perhaps the resident did not understand. And as the assessors pointed out, we currently have the ability to enter into deferral programs and that there is a cost. So I don't see anything here. And my concern was I, you know, if he was trying to create something that did not include an interest rate that the state requires, which is 8%, as well as the 50% requirement. So you know, my concern is that we have something that isn't really in usable form. And I just, once council has reviewed it, if he can, if we can reach out, if the office can reach out to the resident and perhaps we can have him withdraw it at town meeting and perhaps revisit it at the special town meeting if he is interested.
Thank you for that comment because I was going to say I don't believe we can change a citizen's position, petition or the wording in a citizen's petition. So I appreciate that you acknowledge it can be withdrawn. So our, so are we good with Article 34? Great.
Sorry.
Sure. Our next article is 35. And that is by Robert Catro. So are there any questions on Article 35?
I have none. It's pretty cut and dry and I'm glad to see you coming forward.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I do have one.
Okay. By all means.
I, I actually have, I think, three on the agenda, so I wasn't sure which one you wanted to speak on, if it's.
This is the, I'm sorry, the solicitation bylaw.
Oh, yeah. Okay, great.
So we, we do currently have something. So I'm just in the bylaw about soliciting. So I'm just wondering, is this meant to replace that, augment it?
So this is an augmentation of our current soliciting bylaw. The current soliciting bylaw basically rests the responsibility on the homeowner by saying, you know, you got to put out a sign. It's basically self-enforcement. Doesn't have a lot of teeth to it. It's, and it's pretty old based on the most updated tactics of solicitors these days. So it was brought to my attention that the town of Foxborough had a very effective one. So I was able to get a copy of that online and especially because it's already been vetted by the Attorney General's Office. And what we did, we took the best that could fit from the Foxborough bylaw and inserted it into the Auburn bylaw. So the red highlighted areas that you see in there is what will be added to our current bylaw. So what that's going to require is a solicitor is going to have to come to town. When they fill out their permit request, they're going to receive a list of all of the people that have signed up for this. So how it will start is if I go online, So how it will start is, if I go online, I put my address into the do-not-solicit databank, and whoever else might want to in town, it's a very simple process, they'll just sign off for it. When a solicitor comes in, they take their application, they get a copy of that entire list. So now, this is a do-not-solicit list. So if you're walking down the street, you have to look while you're on that street. If that house is listed as do-not-solicit, you can't knock on that door. If you do go knock on that door, now that homeowner has a right to call the granting authority, so it might be the clerk, or the police department, whoever it might be. And that permit can be reviewed, revoked, or they could enact some type of discipline to them. But ultimately, the goal is here is, so you can't restrict religious, political, or charitable organizations at all. So those won't be affected. Anything protected by the First Amendment will still be okay. But this is to get rid of the majority of solicitors that don't abide by the regulations. And it gives the homeowners the ability to have something that says, you can't come to my yard, which we don't currently have right now. So this is really just a upgrade to the current law that we have, or kind of bylaw, excuse me.
Are there any additional questions?
So I just want to clarify, so essentially, you're adding the red wording in to the existing bylaw, you're not changing existing bylaw, and you're basically giving it more teeth. So similar to a do-not-call list is now a do-not-knock list.
Yeah, basically, that's pretty much it. And also, I have to say that the footwork was done by a bunch of other people, so I can't take full credit for this. But it was vetted by the police department, it was vetted by the appropriate departments in town that will be touching it, so it's not going to really affect their day-to-day operation as well, and I want to point that out. And realistically, it's probably going to take the about equivalent database as what a computer would for letters. I mean, it's just going to basically, you know, we're going to need to be able to hold some addresses. So incidentally, also, the people will not need to put their full names in, so they won't have the identity of the homeowner either. They're just going to have your address and nothing else. So what will happen is, if you happen to sell your house, or it trades hands, the town clerk will notify the appropriate department, they'll remove that from the house, the house will be removed off the list. If somebody buys that house, they move into town, now they have to go re-sign up for it. So that's, you know, a step of equity and fairness built into it, is really what it is, which generally is what the Attorney General likes to see. You know, they don't mind the restriction, they like to see that you provide an opportunity to be fair and equitable while you do it.
Are there any additional questions?
I have a question more for town administration. What if any updates to the website would be needed? And do we have the ability to do those updates? So a resident who may be interested in doing this, should it be adopted, they would be able to fill out a form, something of that nature?
Through the chair, the town clerk will assist in answering that.
So I've already been speaking with Mike on how we're going to go about this, because we're also going to have a sign-in sheet that people can fill out in our office. So he's already said that it's capable to start a form online, just like the public records request. So it'll be like that.
Thank you.
There any additional questions? All right, so we are going to move on to Article 34. This is a traffic study bylaw by Mr. Tatro as well, I believe. Do board members have any questions?
So I have a couple. I guess I'll start with town administration. I know that it was just discussed previously that we could not amend a citizen petition language, but is it possible for the citizen to amend the language in advance of town meeting? And the reason why I ask is, there's some things in here that I would offer to Mr. Tatro to strengthen this, just to give you some examples. The, you know, 1,320-foot traffic radius, speaking of Perry Place project, the critical intersection is Perry Street at Auburn Street, that's over 1,500 feet away. So it wouldn't capture that intersection.
So if you look at the way it's worded, if you have the correct, because it was edited at one time. So, and just to be clear, I did run this through Dr. Menard, but I also want to state that I don't necessarily imply that he is endorsing or agreeing with anything that I'm proposing, but it was run through him, just so you know. So how this would work is, the reason I just chose a 1,320 square feet, a straight footage, rather, was it's a quarter mile, right? Pretty simple, you know, standard to start from. But then if you look, anybody who, one thing I didn't want to do was restrict the ability of anybody to ask for a traffic study. So you can see, it doesn't have any restriction. The way we do it now is, anybody on any of the deciding boards can ask for a traffic study. That will remain the same. I don't want to interfere with any of that public process. So what will happen is, the standard is 1,320 feet, however, a member of the board can request that it be modified, so you can make it bigger or smaller, it was not restricted to either way. And then, if the board agrees to modify it, it will go to a local, one of the local departments through the Department of Inspection Services. So you vote on it, you decide you want it to be larger. Department of Inspection Services sends it maybe to engineering, or whatever it might go, they come back with their recommendations on what size it should be, and then the board votes to agree on that amended size. So that could also make it smaller, and again, it may be appropriate to make it smaller for some projects, and less restrictive than 1,320 square foot minimum, let's just, you know, for instance, there might be. The idea of this, first of all, is, we don't currently have one on the books right now, so that's the most important part of it. Timing is everything, because we are right at town meeting. What happened was, about one or two zoning board meetings ago, a traffic engineer mentioned, oh, as long as you don't, it doesn't interfere with your traffic study bylaw, or something to that effect. And the light bulb went off on several people's heads in the room I could see at the same time, we don't have a traffic study bylaw. So immediately went online, I realized that several of the larger communities in Massachusetts do, smallers don't. We happen to be in that community size that we probably should. We're in the middle, but we probably should, based on our highways. So really, this was the point of that. It wasn't really necessarily for 40B, it is, but also because the Starbucks proposal would be a good example, where that would overlap into those surrounding neighborhoods a little bit. Even the fire station proposal, for example, if somebody wanted to have that, just for an example, that's a good overlay of where we would start and have a standard. What it also does is, if you think about what happened with Mr. Lindblom, for example, he had a lot of issues with those people abiding by the rules of the special permit in terms of when they could start their construction, when they could stop their construction. So we added some, that's directly out of wall fam as well. They have to detail and explain how they're going to get in and out of sites, what time they're going to start, what time they're going to stop. So that's a very good protection for us, I think, for future projects. And really, my biggest concern is, if you look at what the state has done with Route 20, if you remember when Ms. Jacobson was our town manager, sometime about halfway through her tenure, they announced that they were going to redevelop Route 20. And if you can see, they're all the way down to the old drive-in in Shoesbury now, with the giant market basket and those apartments. And they're all the way to basically the Oxford Walmart. So we're left in the squeeze here. And you can see what's going to happen, is they're going to come to Auburn, and they're going to time this with probably the same time they start working on improving the actual improvements on the Mass Pike that are scheduled. So I'm not only looking for the fact that we have these other, you know, medium-sized projects coming up right now, but realistically, in a five-to-seven-year period, or a 10-year period, we're going to have some very large construction projects, and they're going to be road development, most likely. So that's when we're really going to have to protect our neighborhoods, because we're going to see larger on-ramps, larger off-ramps, more traffic. And that's where I really want to protect us, because that's where our neighborhoods will get chunks taken out of them. So that's really the purpose of this. The other part of it is, as you know, Dr. Menard runs that subcommittee that is a zoning board review committee. So even if there are weaknesses, we could literally send it to that review committee with your recommendations, they can assess those, and it can be modified for the next town meeting. So I don't want to have this, I don't want anybody to think that this would be like an exed in stone, we're not changing this. I'm certainly open to any type of edits, even posted, if we needed to. But I think not having one on the books leaves us in a precarious situation. So that's why I acted on it as quickly as I could.
No, I'm 100% in favor of having one on the books, I'm just saying, so, one of the things common in here is, when you do set a footage like that, you have the board may add, but typically, you also have your professional staff may ask. So as we all know, a lot of these projects go through an internal DCG review of staff, and at that time, if there's language in here that says the DPW director, or others, or the fire chief can say, no, I want a larger one as well, you know, they can red-flag it at that early stage, before it even gets to the board. Because as we know, a lot of the studies are already done before they even get to the board. So that's sort of the, one of those areas where I think that, you know, this could have had stronger teeth. Another thing is just, you know, the standard, like the crash history, in here you have three years, the state standard is actually five years, because you capture more in there.
The reason I shortened it to three years is because of the COVID situation that we're running into now with our 40Bs. If you go past three years, they all use COVID data on you, and none of that's accurate. And we've had that experience with our current projects, where they're trying to put very short data at us.
Right, but in two years, you're out of COVID. And five years is traditionally a lot better capture, when you're talking about traffic reports. It's what I do for a living.
And again, I totally appreciate that, but again, that can be modified, I don't think it's necessarily restricted. And I'm, again, not opposed to getting it through and sending it right to a review committee. I'm certainly flexible with that. I'm not owning it as far as my own personal thing, I think it just benefits the town, and we have town meeting right around the corner, and let's get it going.
No, I mean, it makes sense to put it in here, I just want to make sure that we do have the ability that we should, really should, approve it at town meeting, and wrap right around and send it to the bylaw review committee and approve it.
I would totally support that, and I would encourage it, and I'll even help rewrite some of the paragraphs you have concern with. And like I said, this is a living document to me, I don't want to own it like it's something that can't be changed and modified regularly, as far as I'm concerned. I just don't want to see the town find itself in an open situation again, where we can't decide what goes on that's best for us.
So I do have a question, based on Mr. Crane's comment. So town meeting can amend this on the floor, if we have town meeting members willing to do so. If there are quick and easy changes that you think should be made, perhaps we should have a conversation, or you should have a conversation with Ms. Tatro, and bring it back at the regular, next regular board meeting, and let's see if we can't...
Sure.
...utilize the parliamentary procedure, and ask a town meeting member to amend, or propose an amendment, and see if we can't get somebody to second it, and then we can make some general changes that might make sense. Because again, I agree with Mr. Crane, I think, and I know we've talked about it, because you're good enough to work with me on the lip proposal. As much as we can automate these things, I think, A, we get the benefit that we're, you know, helping a business coming into town by saying to, empowering the staff to make a decision that's going to benefit the board process overall, and the residents overall. So to me, that's kind of sticking in my mind, that I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to be, you know, responsive to business, also giving the professional staff the ability to help not only the resident and the business, but the board, get things moving, so that when you get it, you'll have a usable, you know, it won't be another delay that you have to build into your process, and carry on your agenda for, you know, two, three months potentially, depending on where it's at.
Oh, totally agree with that, and I respect it. I really shot with the 1,320 feet, because I honestly just thought it was a fair and equitable place to start, and then having the ability to expand it or contract it would be, you know, the built-in flexibility of the boards. But if somebody wanted to bring it up to a half a mile, I don't, again, I don't have a problem with that. If you wanted to put it at 1,800 feet, I'm not opposed to that at all. I just thought it would be a good starting point to have a conversation, really.
Yeah, well, where you're proposing this, it would be helpful if Mr. Crane and you could sit down and work through whatever general ideas.
As long as you feel as though we have time to make some last-minute switches and changes, I'm all for it. Whatever you need to do, I'm comfortable with that. I have my faith in the board, that you'll, you're making decisions that are going to be based on the needs of the town as well, so go for it.
It will need to be amended on town meeting floor, but that's...
Okay.
...eminently doable, and I think if we bring staff in, just to get their feedback as well, we can...
And I'm not a town meeting member, but I planned on going for this one, just because I knew I had a few things on the agenda, and I'm just going to sit quietly in the wings in case people do want to ask questions, so I would make myself available for that as well.
Just before you do that, do call Mr. Baker and let him know that you're going to be there, and that you are available to answer questions, just so the moderator's aware that the resident who's proposing it, I know sometimes residents propose things, and they don't reach out to the moderator, and then he doesn't necessarily know that you're being there, he can't plan that, so...
Okay.
If you would be...
I didn't realize that was a necessary step, so yeah, I will do that, I'll reach out to him through the...
He oversees the meeting, it's just courteous, you know. Probably is probably my general hang-up, but just out of courtesy for the moderator, so that he knows, and then he can identify you, and I think it'll just make things go a little smoother.
I mean, hopefully, I get to sit the whole meeting and not have any questions whatsoever, but I'll be there just in case. Okay, so is that all for that one?
Are there any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to Article 37, which is also yours, asking to, a vote to approve, boards and commissions shall be recorded and available for replay.
Right.
Do board members have questions?
I have two questions on this. One, it mentions specifically the Auburn Water Commissioners, does town meeting have jurisdiction over forcing the Auburn Water Commissioners to do something?
We do. So I can tell you why, from my point of view, why we do, and maybe the town might think personally differently, but I'll just share my experience with you. So when I worked for the sheriff's office, part of that time when I was there as a junior administrator, if you will, was they got rid of county government. If you remember, the county commissioners were downtown in the old courthouse, and they handled the county engineers, and it was actually the jail payroll and the state hospital at the time that no longer exists, the county hospital that no longer exists. And they had county engineers, which were, they were like the people that go around...
Surveyors, yeah.
The lines, and you know, they'd probably know better what...
Surveyors, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So when they eliminated that level of government, there was a lot of questions about the sheriff's office, because the sheriff's office is a constitutionally guaranteed office, but the downtown part of it, which is the civil process, is more of a, what they call a quasi-government organization, which is what our water department falls under, quasi-government organization. So they are an elected board, they are part of the government organization and process, and we do pay them fees. They also have blue plates on their cars that make them state. So based on my training experience and my background with this, we have full authority to have them be compelled to have their meetings on television. All we're really changing is our current bylaw that says each board will vote on whether or not they shall be televised, and it will be changed to basically each board shall be televised. And I think it was interesting, is one of the people, I was collecting the signatures for this, and one of the gentlemen that showed up stuck around and had conversation for a little while, he was a pretty smart guy, and I got a lot of insight off of him, but he said, you know, this isn't asking for much, this is what the minimum acceptable standard should be at this point. You know, that's really all this is. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but we should be able to shed some light on what goes on at the water department. There's a bunch of people in town that have questions about it, whether they are valid questions or not, I don't know. So we should be able to learn a little bit more as people that pay for their services and elect that as a body. So yes, that is, I believe, our jurisdiction.
So I guess my question to town administration is, when the town attorney reviews these, is that one of the things that he'll be able to specifically weigh on? Because I agree with you, it's a minimum standard that any government, quasi-government, state government, local government should be doing.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that we legitimately can force them to do it.
Through the chair, absolutely.
And also, keep in mind the same, it wouldn't be for, you know, subcommittees, obviously, we don't record those now, it's not required by Massachusetts statute to do that, we wouldn't bother doing that now, nobody wants to sit and have people talk about definitions of words for hours upon hours. So this is really just for decision-making boards. If they're spending money and they're making decisions on projects, it's no reason for me not to be able to go on ACTV and watch what the last meeting was for anybody's board in town. So, that's all.
If I may, this isn't for remote participation, it's just recording of a meeting, correct?
So they would, they would need to either record it where they have it, the location, and do it out of town, or they would have to come here and do it under the guise of ACTV, however it would happen, but it would have to be recorded. I'm assuming they would come here, maybe at the planning room, I don't know, but...
And I just, again, I'm in favor of it being televised. I know that we have constraints now with scheduling meetings, I just want to make sure that we are providing space, so that a board that doesn't normally meet in a televised room has accessibility to meet, so...
So I know, they normally meet like the third Thursday of the month at 10 o'clock in the morning type of thing. They have an unusual meeting schedule that I don't know that interferes with most of our evening scheduled meetings.
No, and that's just the water, I just want to make sure all boards and committees are provided that, so...
I do know that our ACTV does have mobile cameras and the ability to record, because I know the Library Board of Trustees meets at the library, and it's not normally... because I know the library board of trustees meets at the library and there's not normally television or televised capabilities in that room, but they bring it in for those meetings. So I think they, regardless of where they're meeting, I think that's something where ACTV can work with them to, to bring it to them.
You know, again, especially they're talking about multimillion dollar projects coming up here. There's always questions about the quality of the water in town. Again, I, I don't necessarily prescribe to all of that issue with the quality of the water in town. You know, I think a lot of our, majority of our problems come from the fact that the highways around here abuse us with their road treatments. And we don't get enough enforcement of that, quite frankly. I don't necessarily prescribe myself to saying that the water department is completely at fault, but I'd just like to know how it works, like to learn more about it. And this is a way, one way to do it.
If I may ask town administration, just a list of all boards that would fall under this. I know the applicant is actually saying the water commission, but this, and I don't know if there's other boards that are, will be affected. The boards I know about are recorded, but will there be any other quasi-agencies that could be affected? And then any other boards that aren't currently being televised that we need to make sure would be televised?
And I would agree, I would think that you want to check. I don't think there are any. I kind of looked through to make sure, you know, off the top of my head. And then I kind of looked through the website, you know, Auburn Guide, and I didn't really see any that aren't currently. I think they're the only ones in town, pretty much.
I would ask, is the sewer board televised? They're what? I'm sorry.
They are not, he said they.
They're not. Okay, so that they, there's somebody else who would fall under it as well?
I do have a question. Is so, for town administration, sorry. Because they are not a part of town, do we loan out that type of recording or video? Does ACTV do that or could we do that? Or do they have the ability now to televise, just provide us with the recording and we can put it out?
Yeah, that's certainly possible. I mean, I, I can't see why it wouldn't be too difficult to just hang a couple of cameras in the room. It's, I mean, it's, you know, these days you can get cameras on Amazon and screw them.
Absolutely, I fully agree with you. I just want to make sure we're getting quality recordings of like what's actually happening at those meetings.
Right.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Oh, go ahead.
So I have been present for some of their meetings. They have no cameras. They have nothing down there. So this is going to be asking them to either purchase some or the rents if we can get them some. But yeah, they don't have any down there currently.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Before you leave, Ginger, can I just ask a question? They are subject to open meeting law, correct? They post their meetings same as everybody else?
They do. They don't send us their postings because we, they don't need to. Well, actually, wait a minute. They do. We don't put them online because they're not a part of the town. They've never asked us to put them online. We would, just like we do for the housing, but we do post them out in the hall. They'll bring them up, we'll stamp them in and we'll post them in the hall.
So second question, they're, they, they maintain minutes. Do those go to your office or how are their minutes maintained?
We don't, we don't keep track of their agendas. We don't hold on to their agendas because they're not a part of us. So therefore, we don't, we don't hold on to their agendas. We don't collect their minutes. I don't know if they post them on their website. I've never looked into it.
I'm just, somebody asked me a question, how one would find out? Because as I think Ms. Tatro pointed out, and certainly they're not unusual in having meetings during a workday for some committees, you know, for people to keep up on what the commission is doing. So that's why I asked that question of you. So we do not, the town does not, the town clerk's office does not have minutes. They would have to communicate with the water district to see what, if any, documentation they, they maintain. Thank you.
Are there any other additional questions? Okay.
Okay, so just in closing on that one, and I, again, for my purpose here, you know, I think we are aware that there was some ethical questions at the water department recently. There was a fine that was issued. There's been a lot of questions many, many years, what actually goes on there? And I think it's time to start shining a light on it, at least to find a little bit more understanding what the community has to expect. So this is, this is the first step. And if they're not going to be willing to televise their meetings and they're not going to be willing to share that information with the public, then obviously it tells me that we have some other bigger issues to contact that would go beyond the board. I don't necessarily believe that, but that's what I'm going to shoot for. So I appreciate your time, thank you, and I'll exit and see you at the town.
Do you have one more, but we have one, yeah, but we have one more before you. So if you'll just hang out for a few more minutes, thank you so much. So we're moving along to Article 38. Is the resident here to discuss this article?
For the new cemetery.
Yeah, sorry, I'm so sorry, it's for the new cemetery. I'm looking at it and you guys don't have the list like I do. Yes. Wonderful. Do board members have any questions?
Can we ask the applicant's name or the petitioner's name?
Of course. It doesn't have your name listed on your petition? Could we have your name, please?
My name is Sayed Taher.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, I know the answer, but I want others who might be listening to, to know. This has gone through several approvals with various boards and the commissions already before we even got here, correct?
So this is, this is our year number four working on this and multiple boards have approved it already. I think it still has to go through Board of Health and we are in the last stages of land disturbance permit.
Great, thank you.
If I may ask, so it still has to go to Board of Health, it's a timing thing? Or are you working through items that they've raised and would like addressed?
So they actually hired a third-party reviewer and they have our application. So there are two aspects to the project. One is, as you know, there's an unauthorized dump, which we're trying to cover. And there's a DEP aspect to it. So that's the third-party reviewer is reviewing. So that's what is actually in the process right now.
Okay, thank you.
Do board members have any other questions? Thank you so much for coming and answering our questions.
Thank you.
We are moving back to Article, or not back, we're moving to Article 39, which is the multiple unit apartment moratorium with Mr. Tatro. Yeah. Great. Do board members have any questions?
I guess I just have a general question for town administration as to what level of review town council will do of this. Because I'm just, again, I'm not clear on the wording as to what we're trying to do or what the petitioner is trying to do. And I just want to make sure, if I can just finish what I'm saying, Bob, please. And we also have a placeholder article. So I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to get that level of review? Just to make sure that, again, if there's some fatal flaw, we can communicate that to the petitioner ahead of town meeting and if necessary, they can withdraw it and resubmit at a future date.
To the chair, we'll definitely do that. I will send it to Bob as soon as the board approves that I can send it to Bob.
So if I may ask the petitioner, did you see the other article that was presented on moratorium?
No, I was aware that there was a possibility of something odd. I was just recently heard of this one. I didn't, like, I know that I introduced one. I didn't know there was a second one that you're talking about for April 3rd, I think, right?
Yeah, so it's Article 26 in the warrant.
Okay.
And it's a placeholder right now, so we're really waiting on legal counsel's opinion.
Sure.
Before we.
And I just ask, because we are trying to take action, we just want to make sure that we do everything legally required to make sure, because it does fail once it goes to the attorney general if we aren't being explicit, so.
So one of the things, let me, let me help, if I can try to share a little bit, is we recently have a meeting with our 40B consultant. And she pointed out that when these warrant articles get voted on at town meeting, they go into effect immediately too. Just so you know, the past, we've been told, or at least, I shouldn't say I've been told. I was, I believe that it was up to the review of the attorney general's office and then it goes into effect. But our 40B consultant said, no, that's not quite the way it works. It's, they go into effect when they are immediately voted on. And then if the attorney general shoots it down, it becomes a null and void. So I'd like to make sure that we double check on that, all of us double check on that to make sure it's right. But that's pretty much what it was explained to me. And the reason I still stand by on this, again, 40B, you know, they talk about it as if some monolith in the middle of the room that we have to walk around, that we can't, you know, that we have to avoid. And it's really not. And if you literally look at it, again, with the report that I submitted, it's designed and it's been completely submitted in racism. So it, it dates back to 1969, 1968. And it actually started by two Boston councils, Boston city councilors, one of them being by the name of Sergeant, who pushed it all the way through. And they had a, he had a fight with another Boston city councillor over the busing situation. And I can remember as a kid, watching the little kitchen TV, waiting to go to school. And they said that some young man had his head run over by a boss in Boston. And I can remember thinking to myself, why would they want to run some kid's head over with a bus when he just wants to go to school? And what happened was they had a, a contest back and forth with one another, saying, well, if you don't want these people in your school district, we'll put them in your school district. And they went back and forth and it became a not in my backyard scenario. And then it started out, it was not supposed to leave Boston, it wasn't supposed to leave 128, wasn't supposed to leave 495, and now here we are. So the whole situation is not really what people have made this law out to be. And I stand by Article 6 of the Massachusetts Constitution. And it says, "No man nor corporation or association of men have any other title to obtain advantages or particular and exclusive privileges distinct from those of the community that what arises from the consideration of services rendered to the public." So in other words, they can't get anything else that we don't get. We can't bypass our bylaws, they can't bypass our bylaws. And then it is a semicolon and an and, which expands the definition, it doesn't shrink it. And it says, "And this title being in nature neither hereditary nor transmissible to children descendants or relatives of by blood, the idea of a man born a magistrate, lawgiver, or judge is absurd and unnatural." So what they did was they, first part of that, they talk about the private sector, business. And the second part of it, they made sure they talked about judges and politicians not being able to pass their, their positions down to their children. So I stand on the fact that just by that, that law is unconstitutional. And I've had several lawyers approach me and say that they think I'm on to something. I've never had a lawyer come up to me and say I'm not, which I think is pretty interesting. And what they say is, you know, well, has this law been contested? It has, but it's been contested on zoning issues. And of course, why would I want to contest a law that's something that's already been argued and disagreed upon? So they don't necessarily, if you, if you bring an article to the attorney general's office and you say, this is the problems I see with this law, they look at it and they go, well, according to the issues you have, this law still stands. They don't go, oh, by the way, it's unconstitutional too, because you didn't ask that question. Unless you specifically ask that question, they're not going to give you that specific answer. So that's why I, I believe contesting this being the fact that none of them are written in CMRs, I think as one of you stated at the last meeting, we can't even describe what safety is. They can't even define safety. They can't decide, you know, I mean, so all of those things need to be defined in a much more clear and better fashion than what they presented us with. So that's why I stand by what I've presented to you in terms of why I believe would actually stand up.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
Not a question. I would just, once again, ask that the way that we had put our placeholder one on there was in response to your request that we look at a, any means necessary for a moratorium. And the instruction to town council that we will get a report back on April 3rd is that we ask them specifically to look at other municipalities that have successfully got a moratorium and to model that and also to look at those that were not successful and avoid those pitfalls. So, so hopefully April 3rd will be a good conversation on a way forward with a moratorium. And I would ask that, that, you know, based on what Ms. Tatro said with our, with our 40B consultant, because that's new to me as well. My understanding is that if any bylaw change, it has to get assigned off by the attorney general before it goes into effect. And I think there is a timeline that if they fail to review it within a certain time, then it automatically goes into effect. But if we can ask the town attorney as he's reviewing the warrant to, when he's here on the 3rd, to opine on that as well, that'd be great.
I know that one of us wrote that information down at the meeting because I commented, I said, Tom, did you write that? And he jotted it down, so somewhere, I don't remember the, the chapter and verse, but I do remember she, she quoted that as well. She said, yeah, look right into it.
So we also, I don't know if we've asked town council to review Articles 6 and 7 of the Constitution. I know we were asking about zoning and stuff. I don't know if the board would like to get input into.
I think that was part of Ms. Tatro's original request that triggered us asking for him to review what Ms. Tatro had provided at that meeting, plus also what I had just stated. So hopefully he is doing his homework.
I just want to make sure that he is, he's specific to those articles.
And I did reach out to the town, just to be clear, and I sent a copy of that report electronically that I prevented, I presented to the board here that talked about how, that was from Boston indicators that said, you know, it's been based in racial practice since it was inception, so. He does have a copy of that if the town forwarded it. So I mean, he, and I have come before you before, obviously, and spoken to these things. And hopefully he referred to those times on the recording as well, you know, so.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good luck and we'll see you at town meeting. I see you're going to have your hands full that night, so good luck.
We are moving along to Article 40. It is by Mr. Consilio. It is to see if the town will seek approval from state legislature to explore a reconfiguration of the town tax base away from property tax to something different. Do board members have any questions?
I think I would definitely need legal counsel to review if this is even our purview, but I enjoy the idea, so I don't know if this is our purview, but.
So I guess my question to the, to the petitioners, is the goal of this, not necessarily a bylaw, but more of a non-binding resolution that the town would take this vote by town meeting and go and inquire with the state on a possibility of this?
Exactly. You know, there's plenty of, you know, think tanks, every billionaire has a think tank. And it seems to me that it would make more sense just to ask the people what they want, if this is a good idea. And then it's kind of much harder to ignore a town asking a question. Because, you know, the lobbyists will just throw money at, at, you know, depending on who pays them, they will just come up with the solution that they're paid for. I'm really just looking for solutions. And I think given the amount of angst generically over money and how we collect money and who gets more and who gets less, I mean, I just think there's nobody's job, there's nobody's job to look at the system at 20,000 feet. And, and that's sort of how I do look at things.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much. If you could just stay, you are also Article 41. That, and that is to see if the town will seek approval from state legislature to explore the formation of a publicly owned community development financial institution in collaboration with the Division of Banks and Division of Insurance. Do board members have any questions?
So I, I got a couple on this. So this is an interesting way to use CDFIs. Normally they are quasi-private to do investment of real estate in areas that normal banks would not invest in, is the, the normal way that these have been used. Has a, has a, any, any municipality that you're aware of in your research on this thought to use a CDFI in this way?
This is, this is way outside the box.
Okay.
Without a doubt. The, you know, there's a, there's a term called the fire economy, which is finance, insurance and real estate. If you take these two things that I've submitted, they're basically to constrain the fire economy and give it back to the citizens. Because certain people, I could get into economic theory, but I don't know if I should. But, you know, we talk about trickle-down economics. The system is actually trickle-up economics. And the finance, insurance and real estate are, have a mathematical advantage because the system. system doesn't quite work the way we think. You play Monopoly, one guy takes all the money. Everybody played fair, the winner didn't cheat, but the math will make somebody win, which means that the majority loses, which is very anti-democratic. Like, we have a mathematical problem. And so, if you take these two together, we can address the math of the economic system, as opposed to picking winners and losers, and, you know, because business is ultimately about cost shifting. You know, we shift the burden to the government, the government shifts it to the businesses, the businesses shift it to the workers, and all we're doing is chasing each other in a circle. So how do you slow down the circle? Or how do you make the circle so that, you know, one guy doesn't win all the money? That's really what I'm trying to get to. And so you have to change, you've got to change the rules at the right spot, so that the ripple effect and the cascade is slower. Because even though Kennedy said, "A rising tide lifts all ships," and actually, what actually happens, and we know from 250 years of history, is that growth is actually pulling us apart. And so to get us back together, we have to write down different numbers.
So I guess my second question is, so the way this is worded, to see if the town will seek approval from the state legislature, so the only way the state legislature grants approval is by passing a bill. So are you asking for a home rule legislation that would allow the town of Auburn to explore the creation of a CDFI? And then that would presumably have to go through the state legislature, signed by the governor? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, let me put it this way. So there's a, I think it's called the Division of Local Services, that helps the towns do different things. So I was at a finance committee conference, and one of the employees, or, you know, was there, and he was talking about how, this was back when they were going to cut a million dollars from Chapter 70, and that they came up with, you know, we would let you raise the meals tax 1%. And this was their, this was their, this was their solution for the budget shortfall that they were basically dumping on all other towns. Turns out, we both went to the same school. And I said, you know, you're not looking at the big picture. Like, the big picture is, is we're all one family, you know, that's what Commonwealth means. So we shouldn't be favoring certain industries over other industries. A lot of what Bob had talked about earlier, you know, interpreting laws is fraught with all kinds of problems. But the goal is ultimately still to be a Commonwealth, where we're all equal, we're all thriving, there's no hunger, there's no seniors that are worried about losing their houses. Like, all of this stuff that we take as normal today is not actually normal. But it's grown up over the years, in many ways, because, you know, because of the Civil War, and, you know, you just go back in history. We've always had a huge amount of social injustice in this country, between rich and poor, native tribes get screwed. I mean, you know, it's, none of this is a secret, right? We have reduced it considerably. We don't have child labor, we don't have indentured servitude, but we still have a huge problem, you know, with, you know, people burning down Tesla dealerships or attacking the Capitol. I mean, you know, we're still a tinderbox of animosity, and it ultimately comes back down to money. So the question becomes, you know, how do you take a 250-year-old system and fix it? And this is the best I can come up with, without being the king. So I think this is, we're buying insurance, we are, it's just about, you know, selling it differently, and using the money differently. We're a town of 15,000 people, we should be able to take care of ourselves. We shouldn't have to rely on the state, we shouldn't be relying on the feds. We should be able to do this, because the money is circulating within us. You know, certainly within the state. If we're hiring a consultant, it's not like he's coming from Mars, he's coming from Massachusetts. Like, we're all just trading with each other. And so, but you're right, to go back to your original question, it's not so much to write a bylaw or to, you know, sort of change the system, it's really about starting the process. This is, what I'm trying to do here, is obviously, this is going to take years, but if 15,000 of the 120 people speaking for 15,000 say, this is a much better direction than, you know, firing half the government and, you know, having tariffs, or, you know, or, you know, nickel-and-dime a 1% rate on the meals tax. I mean, we've got to do something substantial to fix a big problem. So this is sort of a temperature, you know? Will, does, do you want change, or do you want to just keep repeating the same things that we're stuck in? But it is an unusual question. I couldn't figure out any other way to ask it. But, you know, when I did the, what do you call it, the citizens legislative thing at the Senate, a few, you know, probably five or 10 years ago, I asked the DOR for information, they flat-out refused to give it to me. Because they don't really want to have a discussion with anybody about how to fix the system. They just, they just kind of, you know, like all of us, they just do the same thing, because that's what's been decided. I've talked to reps, we had the reps here the other night, I talked to them afterwards, you know, they'll tell you they can't get 120 people, or 140 legislators to agree. So I'm saying, okay, well, maybe we can get 120 town meeting members to agree.
So I guess, maybe you ask this question, I mean, so, I'm just trying to understand if what you're asking is the best process to get the wheels moving. Did you ask the senator and the representative whether they thought a home rule petition was the best course of this? Or is it a study committee appointed by the select board, or something along that lines, to, because going right to the legislature, if they say no, it's dead on arrival. I mean, you just, it's dead.
Well, that's why I put the divisions in there. Because it's not, the legislature, I'm not even sure, to be honest with you, I'm not sure how much information the administration will give to the legislature. So that's why I have both in there.
I guess Mr. Crane's...
So that we can literally, you know, we can set up a committee that says, we want to form a CDFI. And then, there are no laws, there's no laws that exist for a town to do that, like you said. But the Division of Insurance is going to have a whole lot of things to say about that, separate from the legislature. And they're going to defer, the legislature is probably going to defer to the Division of Insurance.
I think this is something that, A, would require a lot of outreach, not only to board members, but to town meeting members, to get them to even understand this concept. I know you and I have had conversations in brief about these type of things, but I make no pretense that I'm an expert on it. Certainly, you have the right to petition. I just don't know with, again, similar to some of the other articles, if it's worded in a way that is understandable, as to what we're asking. Are we asking town meeting to petition the legislature to do something? Because that's not clear in the wording. I guess I'm just at a loss on that procedural issue. And I like people to be successful, especially when they put a lot of effort into these articles. So, you know, I just don't want it to get reflexively rejected, because people don't understand it. I guess that's my concern. But anyways, thank you.
Can I ask to town manager, when you do the warrant review for town meeting members, will you allow citizens, petitions, individuals to come in and explain their petition? Or do we only do town items?
Through the chair for the pre-town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they'll be invited as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Board members have any additional questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. We are moving along to Article 42, that is the comprehensive independent audit of the town of Auburn. So, Mr. Largess, that is you. Do board members have any questions?
Good evening, board.
Do board members have questions?
I mean, I would just say that I just got this right before the meeting, so I haven't been able to read it and digest it. The only thing I would ask is that, as we go to town meeting, obviously, all of this has a cost. So if town staff will be prepared at town meeting to outline the potential cost to the town in order to do what this is requesting, and again, knowing that I haven't read this because I just got it, but it is about six pages long, that way...
Ten.
That way town meeting is aware, it's double-sided, you're right. That way town meeting is aware of the potential cost.
Through the chair, no problem.
If I'm not mistaken, don't we already put like $50,000 aside for an audit?
So I believe that's for the normal mass general law required audit, not this level of audit.
Okay.
That is the case, yes. I know we have an April 3rd meeting. Would it be possible, if board members had questions, for you to return later this week? So we could get through this? You have, absolutely, if you have questions...
No, so I think we would have to amend the original, because we voted for one item on that. That's why I was asking if...
Can I just ask clarification? Don't we normally meet after, I would assume after the 3rd, to look at all the warrant articles and vote our recommendation, yes or no? Is that happening on the 3rd, or does that happen in the meeting after the 3rd?
Through the chair, that'll be happening on the 14th.
On the 14th, okay. So if we have questions at that point, I think that's probably the appropriate time to ask questions.
Would you be amenable to returning on the 14th?
I will have to check, I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I do have a lot of things that I'm trying to juggle.
No, I completely understand. If we perhaps had them available for you...
Excuse me, one more.
Of course. Any of our questions available to you before the meeting, where you could provide a response? Would that work for you as well?
I don't really know what kind of questions, it's pretty self-explanatory in that, in the packet that I gave you. It's been well thought out. There is no motive, it's just that we haven't done an audit like this. This should be done at the end of every town manager's departure, and we haven't done it that I can recall in ever. I did talk to Senator Moore the other night about it, and he was saying that Milbury does it. And I believe that Shuesberry does it at the end of every town manager. When they depart, the new one comes in, there's an audit done.
Was this outlined from another community? Or how did you come up with 10 pages of...
Just speaking to people, careful thoughts.
And I know, I think Mr. Crane mentioned, so some of us just got the revision...
Correct.
Just before the meeting. So there is probably a lot to digest. I don't know if there's any key points that you could want to call out for us, that we can take away, but...
Nope, just the general outside, external audit.
More than what we currently do.
Correct. Correct. Matter of fact, I got the...
So I think, I think the best way to describe this is a deep dive, that's more of a forensic audit of everything in town, whereas what is required in the MGL is a financial audit of best practices, and they look at different aspects. They might look at accounts payable one year, accounts receivable next year, those, you know, policies might be in place to protect the financial. So this is more of a deep dive audit than what's normally done.
They're basically just looking, much like a private company, at the audit, the financial statements, and make sure that there are no quote-unquote "material" issues with those. You know, it's a pretty high bar to meet, so...
I didn't even realize this was possible until somebody brought it to me and said, "Hey, you only need 10 signatures, have at it."
Sure. That is the, to have a citizens petition added. Well, I think we will review this, if it could possibly be available. That would be wonderful. We completely understand if you are not available. But at this time, does anybody else have any questions?
No, I just got it tonight, and to be honest, I, you know, I think we have a lot on this agenda, and I think we need to, we did get a certain number of these after we reopened the warrant, which I'm very glad that we saw that. But obviously, you know, having gotten it at 6:30, I'm not going to be able to wax poetic or come up with great ideas for questions, but I appreciate it.
Sorry it's so in-depth.
No, it's not, it's not about being in-depth, Mr. Largess, it's about people needing time to review things. And I'm trying to respect your time by actually looking at what you presented to me, and not just give it a cursory view and say, "I'm not going to recommend it, just because the sky is blue today, and there was a pig in the front yard." So, you know, I need time, and...
Fully understandable.
You know, other town managers have heard me speak about needing time to review things, so I've been about 11 years in to, I require a lot of time with the moratorium on the 3rd. There is no way in hell I'm going to get through 10 pages and still be prepared for a moratorium discussion with town council, which I think is very important to not only yourself, but many residents in the community. But I appreciate both Mr. Consilio and yourselves, and Mr. Tatro, and Mr. Baracus, and Mr. Taher, bringing things to town meeting. I think that's a positive step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are moving to item number nine, there are no town meeting, town manager items. Item 10 is table items, and we have none. We do have some member items, and I will turn them over to the members individually. So, Mr. Crane?
Yeah, so the goal of the different issues I had asked to be put on the agenda are just sort of close the loop on some of the stuff that we've discussed at previous meetings. Obviously, at the last meeting, we had Senator Moore and Representative Frost here discussing 40B. They had offered, based on our comments and questions, to, had they get a letter from the board expressing our concerns and expressing our wants and desires as it relates to 40B, that they would be willing to discuss with the other municipalities within their districts, as well as file legislation on our behalf, but not through a home rule petition. So they'd be filing it themselves in their own name, in order to amend 40B to address the concerns that we have, and I'm sure that several other communities have. So I had asked to put on the agenda a draft letter, or to even have a vote to instruct staff to draft a letter. They've been proactive to provide us one, that basically summarizes our comments or concerns or desires in what amended 40B statute would look like. So I was, you know, if this letter is sufficient for the members, then we can certainly vote on sending this letter. If not, then I'd ask that the members, and I did not draft this letter, if there's anything else you want added, that we provide it to staff and we vote... and we vote to approve pending those additions for the Chair's signature.
Board members have any questions?
So more of a statement. I would like to take another pass at it. I would like to add some more context to what we're asking. I think to have it meaningful to the representative and the Senator, I think what's behind these comments needs to be fleshed out a little more. So if we could carry this over to the next
Sure, regularly scheduled.
And I will work to send something to the Town Manager and ask her to share it with the rest of the Board, whatever I have. But obviously, I'm not saying what I'm going to write is wonderful and encapsulates everything, so.
Since, can I ask, since we're holding this over to the next regularly scheduled meeting, if any Board members have any additional information that they would like to include in this letter? That we get that to Town Manager and we can have it added?
Yeah, like I said, that was the goal of the agenda item. Again, staff was proactive, which I deeply appreciate in putting the framework together for us and helping put, pen to paper what our thoughts were that night. As I think many of us were rapid fire shooting stuff at the representative and the Senator on changes we wanted to see. So thank you for staff for doing this. And if we need a motion to hold it, I'm more than happy to.
I'll just make a motion that we hold it to the next regularly scheduled meeting. We can put it as a regular agenda item under Select Board. And I will endeavor within the next week to get any revisions that I would like to see for consideration before the next meeting to the Town Manager.
So this is a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Moving along to 11B.
So this is another issue that was discussed at the past meeting as well as several meetings in the past, which is questions that we had relative to any outstanding CIP projects, their status. That, and this came up as often that we see around this time of the year, that there's requests to move funding from one CIP project to another. That will go before Town Meeting. And I think it was Mr. Chambers that said it'd be great to have a report of all the outstanding CIP projects that have been approved and funded by Town Meeting, their status, and sort of a, you know, when we think that they'd be completed. And that way, you know, both ourselves, Town Meeting, as well as the residents, have an understanding of, you know, the status of those projects that we've all approved. So I'm just, I wasn't looking for the, the report tonight. I was simply thinking that in the past, we've had to, you know, it was requested that we make a formal vote requesting these types of reports. So I wanted to put that out there to, to, you know, discuss with my fellow members if you thought it was a good idea to make that formal report for a future meeting.
So I'm going to be in favor of that. As a matter of fact, I think the warrant, based on discussions previously moving CIP money around, has come back with a revision of two projects that were approved and splitting the school looking to fund out of that rather than another project. So any insight into it? I would love to see a formal project, formal report and understanding where those projects are, anticipated funds. And several of the projects are multiple years down the road and have been closed out with money just sitting there. And I'd like to have a discussion about where those funds go. Rather than transfer from a SIP to another project, I would, I would like to have conversations about getting that into the general fund and projects be approved on their merit rather than just shifting funds in there.
I agree with Mr. Chambers and thank Mr. Crane for bringing this forward as a member item. I definitely think that this can help our Town Departments, especially as we go into some tight budget seasons or what are projected to be tight budget seasons. So if we can deal with some unanticipated or needs that aren't being met in the budget, I think if this is one part of that solution, I think that's something we should explore. And I think it also helps, you know, the residents see that we're good stewards of their funds, which is not to say I'm not making a judgment call that because it's sitting there that we're not. I'm just saying, you know, it's important that every dollar be accounted for and used its highest best use in the quickest possible way so that we are not incurring additional debt. We're not asking for additional funds on the tax levy. So whatever we can do to keep that manageable is great. Obviously, this isn't going to solve all those problems, but it's a good start to at least examine it.
So is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we formally request a report from Town Administration on the status of all outstanding CIP projects that have been funded by Town Meeting. I'm going to ask for this report after Town Meeting because I know the finance staff is going to be rather busy preparing for Town Meeting. They're still meeting with finance. You know, I think we'll be dealing with Town Meeting and other articles. So it would be nice if we did this after.
I'll second that.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. We are on 11C.
So again, just tying up, coming full circle and trying to tie up loose ends. We had residents before us, came before us because of a licensing issue. However, they had brought to our attention water runoff issues on Auburn Hill Road. They voiced their frustration that they could not get Town Administration staff to address these issues. There was a commitment that night that staff would follow up, meet with them, develop a plan to address that. So I just wanted to, again, bring it back before us and see if we can just get an update on that and sort of close the circle for both the residents but also for the Board.
Sure, I'll ask Joanna to come up, she can speak on it. But I was also involved in multiple meetings regarding this situation with the neighbors. And I believe the electric company had gone out as well because I think there was some wiring that was going to be run. The issue with, there was an issue with a catch basin that had sunk. And there was also an issue where there was snow accumulated at the end of the road. What we did find out is that it's private property at the end of the road. So one of, we can't, we couldn't go further on to that property. And that created an issue. We did not speak again to the developer, I'm not sure if Joanna has.
So the developer has come in, I think maybe this week, just basically coordinating the work. We do have a catch basin that we need to rebuild. And we're going to be doing that after April 15th, which is where our road opening starts. We allow road openings after April 15th. So we'll be rebuilding that catch basin and coordinating some of the road work. Obviously, we don't want to have everybody at once because nothing's going to get done. But we do want to make sure that everything gets done in a short amount of time so that it limits the disruption to the residents.
Can I just ask a question? Have we also, I know the residents also voiced concern that the existing catch basins weren't enough to catch the water coming down from the hill or around the corner. So are we also doing an analysis to see if there's additional catch basins? If the singles have to be increased to doubles or?
So there was, there's an area on the corner of Auburn Hill Road and I think it's Old Farm Road that after we met with the residents, we found some older pictures. It looked like there was a catch basin that was, wasn't placed in the right spot to be able to catch runoff coming from up top of the hill. Turns out the catch basin was actually placed there because there was water bubbling out of the property, out of the hill. And that's where the catch basin was placed. But we do have plans to add an additional catch basin to catch some water runoff from the gutter on Auburn Hill as well.
Thank you.
By May, I heard April 15th. The work will be done then or you'll start work then?
No, we limit road openings until between November 15th and April 15th just because there's always a chance that there might be inclement weather that we don't want to have a road opened, opened up during an inclement weather.
When will the basin work be completed?
We have, we're, I can tell you that it's on the top of the rebuilt catch basin list. So I'm hoping that it's going to be rebuilt by the end of the month. But I also am going to be working with the contractor, making sure that we're not in that spot when he's doing his water tie-in or the electric national grid when they're doing their conduit.
So you also had mentioned that you have some before pictures. I'm wondering if you can come back in a May meeting and share, you know, what you did and the work as it's been completed. And again, knowing that the residents had issues, we do work through them. And, you know, it'd be nice to share some of the work that you guys do and how we are trying to respond to the residents and address their needs. I'd love to see something in May with some pictures. Pictures always tell a good story.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Okay, we're going to go on to 11D.
So again, just, you know, coming full circle and just trying to wrap up requests that had come before us. On several meetings, we had residents come before us, let's say, two years ago and then a year ago for sidewalk completion of new sidewalk on Bryn Mawr Avenue as well as cleanup on, over the Pike Bridge. The state had responded timely manner in order to clean that up. Although I will notice that they patched it with asphalt and some of the asphalt due to the winter has come up. So if we can just communicate with them saying, come sweep it. Or, you know, sort of communicate that with the state so they can clean that up. But I know that there was a desire to extend, sort of create that missing sidewalk link that would then create a sidewalk essentially from Oxford North all the way to Route 12 at that point, that would create a walking link. And there's that missing sidewalk link in Bryn Mawr Avenue. I know that this Board, when we were advocating for the creation of funding, sidewalks, specific funding in ARPA dollars for sidewalks, we had asked that it be geared towards this first. So I just wanted to get an update on the status of that.
Sure, so as you know, we did do some immediate action to create a walking trail. Subsequent to that, we have an RFP prepared. And we'll be sending it out to engineering firms for the survey design construction permitting in coordination with Mast Dot.
Are there any additional questions?
So the RFP will go out shortly. And then when do we envision construction happening?
It would depend on how long it takes for the permitting and the coordination. I know that engineering firms are.
A lot of work right now, yeah.
See, so I'm, I'm not sure until, until we actually get a board, you know, an engineering firm on board.
Thank you.
I think that just kind of goes back to the comments. Like, we're responsible to respond to the residents. So any timeline or generalities will help. I know when I get a phone call, I don't have timelines. And I don't expect every department to have every answer. But even a general timeline, hey, it's going to go out in the spring. We expect bids back by this. So we should have resolution before, you know, whatever date.
Kind of maybe to that point, doesn't have to necessarily similar to the previous one be an update that comes to us. But maybe just communication from Town Administration after that bid goes out that can say, we issued the contract to this consulting firm. And, you know, based on their scope and their response, we envision designs back by this time and then we'll be bidding at that point. That way, we just have some information. But it doesn't have to be a whole agenda item to come up here and present that. It can just be a communication in our memo, in our books.
Sure. Select Board General Items Public Comment is coming up in just a moment. If you would like to sign up for Public Comment, you can. I understand, and you can make that comment during Public Comments if you would like. Do Select Board members have any other questions? Okay, so thank you, Joanna. We are moving along to number 12, Public Comment. Yes, please. Thank you. If you could just give your name and.
Kenny Lardess, 39 Perry Place. This has been going on for two years. Why was an engineering firm contacted two years ago? What is, I just don't understand. I mean, myself, the police chief commented on this. Another Town Meeting member from the other side of Town, Mike Loom, you know, we came in front of you. What is taking so long to put a sidewalk in? I mean, God forbid, knock on wood, nobody has gotten hurt. Although there's been a couple major accidents over there. There was one right in front of the young lady, Mrs. Myers, that came in to talk to you about this. Car ended up on her front lawn right across the street from the, it was a head-on accident. This is, it's kind of, you know, now we have to go to an outside engineering firm and how long is that going to take? It's kind of crazy to think that the town can take this long. I mean, I spoke to Joanna earlier about the guardrail in front of the basketball courts. That's been over a year. Now, she informed me that it was repaired once and it's now still, it's been a year since that's been. What takes, I just don't understand when it comes to the resident's safety. What takes so long? Do I need to buy a board and get on there and put it up myself for the guardrail? The catch basin on that road, there's more work than a catch basin. If you go over there and walk that, the houses on the, if you're looking up the hill on the left-hand side. Parts of the yard is caved in and washed out. And it's just, I just don't understand what takes so long to do this work for the safety of the town residents. I really don't. I mean, Mr. Crane had talked about it, Mr. Carpenter had talked about it. It's a safety issue. We've allocated, you know, if my calculations are wrong, please correct me, close to $300,000 in the last two years for sidewalks. I haven't seen a sidewalk done in the town. I haven't seen a repair. I haven't seen a construction of a sidewalk. But yet, I'm sure we're going to be asking or allocating more money for sidewalks again this year. And these are some of the reasons why I requested this audit. Where is the money going that we've allocated for these projects? I just don't know. And please, give me some guidance. I have people asking me. The residents over there contacted me a couple of months ago when Joanna was up here speaking then. I don't know. Throw me the guidance, please.
This is certainly something we can look into. I don't know that we have the answers here for you tonight. But this is certainly something we can look into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have no minutes at this time. We would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned.